... meeting, June 12th, 2025. Mr. Hatch, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Aye. Pledge of allegiance to the flag and the United States of America, and to the public, religious, and one nation, and with God, individual liberty, and justice for all.
Mr. Fisher?
Here.
Mr. Hatch?
Here.
Mr. Whitridge?
Here.
Mr. Serena?
Here. So, for the chairman's report, I just want to start off, I want to thank you guys for being here tonight, really appreciate it, for your continued support and engagement in the schools. I want to take a few minutes to address an important but difficult subject, it's the budget in our district and some of the cuts we're facing this year. This is not a conversation we take lightly, every decision we make impacts our students, our teachers, and our community. Before I get into details, I just wanted to assure you that our top priority remains providing high-quality, well-rounded education to every child in the district. Like many school districts across the state and the country, we are facing significant financial pressures. There's several factors that contribute to the budget and some of the shortfalls requiring us to make some difficult choices. This is not a town issue, as they support us with their financial resources, which they can, however, they're responsible for all the other departments in town, police, fire, everything like that. Also, free cash is there, but it's not a good option. The free cash enables us to get great rates on our loans, keeps the taxes in check, little things like that, any unforeseen major improvements or fixes that need to be made. And it's, most of all, it's an undependable source of money that cannot be relied upon as a permanent funding source. What people forget is that the budget increases, the budget increases that we get are maintained every year going forward. First, insurance costs have risen dramatically, especially health insurance. For our employees, the cost went up almost 17%. Our district covers 90% of the health insurance costs, even on top of the increase, which is higher than most surrounding districts and communities. So not only is that a huge cost, but it's used cost, not included in our operating budget. And the town handles that cost, and it's what is called a Schedule 19, and it gets billed back to us, so that's a big... Secondly, transportation costs have gone up sharply, fuel prices remain high, the costs associated with maintaining and retaining quality drivers have grown substantially as we strive to ensure all students get to school safety safely and on time. These expenses are unavoidable. Third, we are experiencing increased in energy costs, heating, cooling, you guys see it at home, it's no different for us, except it's just the bigger picture. Finally, and perhaps most importantly, our special education costs have grown significantly. This is due to both increasing number of students requiring services and the need to meet their individualized educational plans, as mandated by federal law. This again is not a Saugus issue, but a state and federal one as well. While we are fully committed to supporting every learning, every learner, the funding we receive for these services does not always cover the full cost of providing them. I think Ms. Tranekin, Mrs. Tranekin can tell you that. We've worked hard to find ways to reduce costs that won't directly impact students through internal efficiencies, consolidating service, and delaying some non-essential projects. This is painful, we know how deeply these decisions affect our families in the community and the staff, and we're working to be transparent and thoughtful and compassionate as possible throughout the process. We are also advocating strongly at the state level for more sustainable funding models and greater support for the districts. Facing these challenges, our teachers and students deserve better. As of now, any cuts are just on paper and have not been implemented. We will continue to explore every option every day. Secondly, families expect all our teachers to be certified and licensed, and that's what we're demanding of our staff. In the meantime, we promise to continue listening, to remain open and accessible, and to do anything we can to protect the heart of the mission, educating children, supporting families and preparing young people for a bright future. I appreciate it, thank you guys. If anyone else has anything to say, please.
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I would add is, like I said, we all have some kind of stake in the system. I have kids at every level, elementary, middle school, high school, and believe me, there's been some real battles between us, all of us, behind the closed doors when we're talking about this budget, because we're all passionate about different things and we all have different ideas. And let me tell you, they're not, none of them are good ideas, that's the problem. There's no one thing I can look at and say, okay, yeah, let's definitely get rid of that, or let's do something here, let's reduce this, you know, it's an impossible task. And, you know, we have, this year was a little more monumental than most years because we do have three bargaining units that we also have to work with. So it's, there's a lot involved with this budget this year, so just know that it's not an easy decision for any of us, we're all, like I said, Mr. Serena threatened to beat me up one day.
Yeah.
No, but it does, it gets pretty contentious in those meetings.
No, because I think you've got people up here who care, and you've got teachers and support staff and administrators who care, and we want to, you know, we want to be able to give the staff, whether it's teachers, support staff, what they need, and we also need to be able to provide for their needs. You can't, you know, classroom sizes, things like that, we can't cavalierly just say, oh, well, just put four more kids in a class, it doesn't work like that. These teachers are stressed out, stretched out now, and we're trying to avoid adding to that stress and doing what we can, so I don't know if you heard anything.
I guess I'll just add by, you know, saying what, going after what Mr. Whitridge said, these decisions aren't easy, but what is more tough is the fact that what we're looking at right now, we're here tonight, we're going to be celebrating a number of success stories. And as a district, if you look at the district as a whole, where we've come in the past five years, it just keeps moving forward and forward and getting better and better. The state's financial picture is tough, it's a trickle-down thing, and it ends up obviously coming to us. We have had, we have to take pride in what we have. If you look again where we were five years ago to where we are today, we're going to, like I said, we're going to be celebrating a number of significant student athletes who are also exceptional students. You know, the awards that we continue to get on the fine arts end, the major success that we're having with the enrichment program after school, all of these things affect us greatly, and we want to make sure that the total student is taken care of. So I'm really happy with the team that we have, it's very, each one of us, very passionate about almost everything, but the most important thing is supporting our students and our educators, so that's all.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to add, echoing with these two gentlemen, said, life will go on, we're going to have, we're having a great end of the year, we're going to have a great year next year, and we're having challenges along the way. If life is anything like, this is the week I'm having as well, one thing doesn't break at once, three things break at once, that's just how you go through life sometimes, and what you do is you prepare in the good times for the bad, so you have things to draw on and resources to draw on and reserves to draw on. We extended a lot of goodwill over the last six years, making sure that when tough times come, people can rely on us, I feel they can. You know, we're all passionate, we all have different ideas about how to go forward, and I think that's a good thing, and we'll find the way forward, and everything's going to work out. And I think a lot of what's going on right now, there's a lot of anxiety, you know, throughout the world and throughout, how are things going to go, and I think when things start settling down, you have a better day the next day, so.
Yeah, and at the end of the day, we've got a bunch of retirements here, and at the end of the day, it doesn't happen without the staff at the schools. So I think that's the most important thing, and that's what we're working on right now, so. Next, I have the report of the superintendent.
All right, I will touch upon that, I mean, because we do have an agenda item on talking about the budget cuts, but it seems we're doing that now, so I just, because I don't have anything really to report other than, next week, we're having a meeting on accepting the updated budget and putting things where they go. I want to thank all of the school committee members, all of the administrators who've worked with me, to try to find efficiencies in the least impactful way possible, and to mirror what everybody said, some of the conversations and some of the discussions, we're clearly heated because everybody's passionate, and it's all about the students. I mean, that's why I'm sitting in this chair right now, if it wasn't for the students, I wouldn't be here, and if it wasn't for the town of Saugus, I wouldn't be here, I'd be, I'd be gone. But, so to put that down for the evening, and we do have other things to discuss, but I do want to send out some congratulations, not only to the people here, I want to congratulate all the athletes that are here and the coach that's here, that did an outstanding job this season, they'll be recognized in a few minutes, but what you showed on the track, the playing field, wherever you performed, was outstanding, and you followed a great fall season and a great winter season as well, and spring was no exception. And, you know, it's so exciting to see that happen and to see that satiety and pride come back on the, in, on the field. So it's, as a former coach, to see the players here, some of the kids I went to school with, you're the child, some of them were former players' kids, so I, it's, I'm getting old and I realize that, but it is a joy to watch everybody play out, it's very exciting to see, and I do want to recognize all the retirees that are here today. Thank you for your service, I mean, when you look at some of the years and the amount of years people have put towards Saugus, I can say this as a former Saugus student, Saugus resident, born in Saugus General Hospital, thank you all for your service.
Can you survive?
Yeah, it survived. But I do want to thank you all, all the retirees, for everything that you've done for the town, the children, the students, and everything, so you'll be recognized in a second. I do want to congratulate the class of 2025, who was able to graduate despite the threat of thunderstorms. I did, in an educator update six weeks before, explain what the exact forecast was going to be, and I was 100% right, it was 50% rain with a possibility of thunderstorms, which is always the case, it ended up being a beautiful night, in fact, it was almost on the chilly side at times with the wind coming across the field. But Dr. Scuzzarelli, you did a really nice job in your first graduation back at Saugus High. And you made it your own, and I think that, I do want to, some of the things that you did haven't been done before, and like when they came out in the stands in the middle and then separated, that's, again, I've been in that position where I could have done it, I didn't, and it looked amazing, and I can't believe I didn't think of it. The other thing I did really enjoy was the fact that it was showcasing the students. The three students that spoke were amazing, they spoke with passion for their community and their classmates, and it was just great, there were three beautiful speeches that I can't say enough about, and it was really a great night for me. And it really kind of wrapped up a handful of great nights, because we had the awards ceremony for the seniors. It was amazing to see where everybody's going and all of the different skill sets and different interest areas that the seniors have. We had the underclassmen awards for the first time, again, Dr. Scuzzarelli came up with an underclassmen awards, which made the senior awards seniors-only and very special to seniors. It combined, then what ended up happening is the book awards and some of the big junior awards were recognized, all the eighth grade awards were recognized there in a nice ceremony with everybody else, and freshmen and sophomores were also recognized for their achievements in class, so that was a great time. So with all of that, I'm very appreciative of all that, I think it was beautiful. And the only thing else, the only other event that I could think of that came up in the last handful of weeks, there was the prom, but I wasn't at the prom, prom's not my thing, but I heard it was excellent, but Shadow Day...
You didn't even go when you were a senior, did you?
I did, but it wasn't...
That's what I'm talking about.
So Shadow Day, so Shadow Day is back in for the, I want to say third or fourth consecutive year, it's grown, there were 75 students, instead of doing a lunch, they did a breakfast first, so they joined together first, then they went out and did their thing, and then they came back to the school, and they did the breakfast at the school, and a nice thing about that was, one of the things that's always been problematic about it is, you go out into these jobs and you shadow police and fire and teachers and lawyers and doctors, they don't all finish at the same time, and if you're like me, you talk a lot and you could miss the lunch, and they don't get to the lunch on time, they, not having to worry about that end time, was a stop time, I think added to the whole experience, and to get everybody there at a breakfast at the beginning was excellent. So, again, we had, there are some negatives that we're dealing with and we're trying to make it positive, but just looking out at the audience tonight, I couldn't be more proud of the students that are sitting here, proud for the parents that are sitting here, and just so appreciative of the retirees that are sitting here, thank you from the bottom of my heart, so that's my...
By the way, on Shadow Day, we had a Saugus alum who's a neurosurgeon.
Oh yeah, absolutely, and that's the thing, we also, because Shadow Day, at one point, was all about the Saugus businesses, and then there's limited businesses at some points, so they expanded it, and then, but luckily, they expanded, a lot of the non-Saugus businesses were alum, so that was great, and yeah, we did have a neurosurgeon that was on my soccer team.
That's awesome. So now, on the new business, I'll turn it over to Matt Serena, the athletic director, because we have some spring athlete awards that we'd like to handle and hand out.
Thank you very much, I'm going to ask Dr. Scuzzarelli to come and join me.
Do we have any representatives, I'm sorry, I didn't see any, that's why.
I didn't see any, but that's why I didn't stop you.
When's those seniors get out the representatives?
Yeah, they're off.
Go on, Greg.
Well, thank you for having us here tonight, we're going to recognize some of our spring athletes. As you've mentioned before, this has been a, you know, a very successful, in my opinion, very successful year for us athletically, we've had quite a few milestones throughout the fall, the winter, we've had three NEC titles, we've had many individual successes, we had girls soccer Madison Bader with her over 100 career points, we've had Peyton Niviasio with her 1,000 career points in basketball, so we've had quite some individual and athletic team success throughout the fall and the winter, which has certainly carried right over into our spring, so there was no lack of excitement throughout our spring sports. And here with us tonight, we have a few individuals, as well as one of our coaches, that we'd like to recognize for all of their efforts and their accomplishments. But before we do recognize them, I'd also like to recognize the coaches and the parents and the families that are here with us tonight. Without your support, these athletes wouldn't have been able to accomplish the goals and the achievements that they've done, so I want to thank you for allowing us to coach them, for allowing us to teach them, and for raising them to be fine young women and men, because they truly are the cornerstones of our school, and we do appreciate everything that you have done for them, so if we could give them a round of applause. First up, we want to recognize an individual from the softball team, and when I say your name, I'd love for you to come up and join us and hang out here, so we can definitely embarrass you for a little bit. First, we have Lily Ventry. Come on up, Lily. So Lily is joining us tonight, because she had an incredible softball career over her time on varsity softball team. She has surpassed 100 career hits, 100 runs, and 100 RBIs, which is an impressive trait to accomplish. Not only is this impressive milestone that highlights her consistency and impact at the plate, it also represents her dedication, consistency, and love for the game that's made her a cornerstone of our program and a true leader on and off the field, so again, we want to congratulate Lily.
Lily, you going to go to AIC?
Can you try?
Up next, we're going to have our baseball standout, Cam Soroco, join us. Mr. Soroco is one of those household names that anytime an NEC team is coming to Saugus or playing Saugus, you know, it's one of those games that they circle on their calendar and wondering if they're going to face Cam on the mound or not, and anytime they see him walking up there, they definitely get a little nervous at what's to come throughout that night. And with that, with that recognition, he's reached an outstanding milestone where he's achieved 200 career strikeouts throughout his time at Saugus High School. It's a testament to not only his dominance, but his perseverance on the mound, so Cam, congratulations. Up next, we have our track and field athletes, and before I get into their accomplishment, I just want to give you a briefing on how track works for our individuals to qualify. So throughout the season, they'll have many meets where they can qualify for states, and then once they're at states, they can qualify for all states. And all states is every division throughout the state competing together, so it's really the best of the best, and we have three athletes here who actually achieved that accomplishment, so we're going to get in and recognize them. First up, we have Destiny Akoye. So at our NEC meet, which was our, which is our 10 NEC schools, Destiny was the champion in the high jump, and she also qualified for the all states, so again, she qualified throughout the season, made it to states, and then was amongst the best at our states in Division Four, and then qualified to compete against the best in the entire state of Massachusetts, so congratulations. Up next, we have Soraya Matthew. So just like Destiny, your teammate, she also won titles at the NEC competition, winning both the 100 meter and 200 meter dash, and then Destiny, sorry, Soraya again, going through states, getting to all states, actually finished eighth overall in states, all states in the 100 meter. So again, she's going against the entire state, the best of the best, and she is the eighth, amongst the eighth-best runners in the 100 meter, and all the while being a freshman. She's also going to be competing in nationals as well, I think, is that next week? Yep, she'll be competing in nationals next week, Philadelphia.
Congratulations, Stan.
So again, we have quite a few accomplishments for our track individuals, and then to showcase our individuals for our track team, we have Peyton Niviasio. Again, just like her, her conopots, she did fantastic at NEC's, and then she qualified for states, and then she became at the state tournament the Division Four Javelin State Champion, so our second this year career, our second individual who won a state title this year, joining Mrs. Felicio in our wrestling, so we have Peyton who won the Division Four State Title in Javelin. She also went on to compete at all states as well. And then if you're wondering how all these athletes, you know, obviously they have the talent to be competing this well, but if you're wondering how they got there, the person behind the scenes that really has helped to contribute and grow our track program is girls coach, Mr. Joe Alba. So just a few weeks ago, Joe was named the NEC Coach of the Year for our girls track program, so again, that's all 10 programs in the state, and I mean, we're going up against powerhouse's such as Puberty, Masco, these are programs that have over 200 kids, and these coaches get together, they take a vote on who the best coach in the girls, the girls NEC is, and Joe was awarded that award this year. And for those of you who don't know Joe, it just goes to...
Who doesn't know Joe?
Those of you who know Joe, but you don't see what he does behind the scenes, you're not going to find a more dedicated person, Joe is down that track, you know, for hours every day throughout the summer, you're never going to find a person who is more dedicated than Joe, and if there is a person that we want representing our school district, representing our coaches, our athletic department, our town, he is definitely the guy, so I couldn't be happier for this well-deserved accomplishment. Thank you very much.
Mr. Serena, I got one thing for you, Joey's everywhere, I always see him doing everything, and I often wonder how, tonight I found out he's got a slightly better-looking twin brother in the back, so that's how it's going to go.
Mike, can we just get, can we get a picture with all the athletes?
No, it's kidding, congratulations.
Go behind the...
No, not with us, just the athletes in the, the athletes in the athletic department. No, no.
Matt, you working on the, Matt, you working on his dad's sure retirement?
And again, I'd like to reiterate, thank you to the parents, because I think we all had kids here who played sports and grew up at sports, and it's not a nine-to-five, it's you got practice here, you're dropping them off there, from the age of, I think, eight to 18, your weekends are dedicated to one thing.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, can we have a round of applause for the parents? Next, we have recognition of retirees by the school committee, do you want to give it to them up there?
You could, you say it, I'll hand it to them.
Okay. So first, we have Kathy Fish, who was hired in 2006, she's going on 19 years.
Why don't you wait until they, yeah, run down there. What's that? Going on a train? Hi.
So first, we have Kathy Fish, she was hired in 2006, and she has 19 years of service, and she's related to superintendent. Next, we have Kathy Tolios, who had all my kids, and she once again was hired in 2006, 19 years, so thank you to Kathy. Next, and I know she's here, Maureen Lukey, Mrs. Lukey, the principal of our school, the Belmonte here. We got to find them all, he's sticky. We got plenty of time, it's probably one of the first ones.
Do you have it on this too?
Yeah, you got to look in that one. We have certificates of appreciation from the school committee and from the town selectment.
Are you sure this is it?
Yep. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Next, we have Trudy Williamson, who I know from robotics. And so the next retiree messes me up all the time, because I always, when I email, I always type T, because it's Trash Prizio, I don't put Patricia, so I have to go back and look, so Trash Prizio. And I got it right here. I just had it.
Probably should have organized it.
Well, they dumped them on me.
It's not Patricia.
Patricia. I just go by Trash, watch, it's the last one.
There it is, congratulations.
Oh God. Next, is my old park instructor. When I was a little kid, she was my park instructor, I don't want to say little kid, I'm sorry, I was a kid, so she was my park instructor, Papa Wall. Yeah, the selectment one's coming.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Bob.
They figured you'd never retire.
Yes, I'm ready for it.
So next, we have Diane Corthen, is she here? She's not here, so we'll just go... She's not here, so we'll just go and next is Patricia Halloran. Oh, you guys want to take a poll? Lorraine Fritz, is she here?
Luanne Fritz.
Luanne Fritz? At least I don't have to get this stuff in order now. All right, I don't want to put you this name, Pam Ashen. Ashen? I did.
I was the middle school nurse forever.
The last one?
There we go.
Oh, my God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, and thank you.
Listen, if you, if you can be a school nurse, you can be a nurse anywhere. Triage. And I know I'm not going to put you this name. Bridget Forziati.
It's the last one every time?
Yep.
Congratulations.
You'll be back. It's like the mobs, they just keep coming back. And next, we have Barbara Gante. And I don't see Kimberly Politano burn, so.
It's like the phantom.
Chair, do you mind if I speak a few words briefly?
No, absolutely, go ahead.
About teachers?
Yeah, no, no, absolutely, go ahead, absolutely, take your time.
I'm sorry, I might read.
No, 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 take your time.
Do you guys mind if I speak about you? Do I, do I have permission to speak?
Well, I had to ask them.
Yeah.
So, so I'm Kevin Fontanella, I'm the SVA Union President. So there's three, three teachers that are here that I just want to make a few brief comments on. I'll send an email to the membership with this, too, along with the other teachers that are retiring. Trudy. So I honestly know Trudy Williamson not at all through her educational skills or teaching skills, although I've heard a lot of great things about that from her comrades at the Belmonte. I know her through her children. I've taught all three of her children. And one thing I, one thing I will say, as my phone runs out of battery, is that teachers are in a unique position when we teach the children of our colleagues. So it's often, it can, you know, you might think this could be an awkward situation where, you know, like we, we know that our kids are being taught by some of our colleagues and vice versa. But one thing I will say is that, you know, Trudy, you're an amazing parent, just having taught your kids, you know, they're all phenomenal children. And, you know, everyone at the Belmonte really, really respects you as an educator. That's why I did know that.
My wife talks about you all the time.
Yeah.
I think she likes horses, too.
So Barbara, Barbara Wall. So we could talk for about a half hour, but I'll keep it short. So Barbara, I just want to say personal thank you for the lunches in your room back at the old high school. You know, when I started coaching, I, I used to eat lunch with Barbara. We used to talk about how coaching had changed, the kids are going soft. You know, we just had, you know, we said a lot of conversations. She also threw the best end-of-the-year retirement parties. No offense to Kowloon, but hers were, hers were way better. It's a rated PG environment, so we won't go into what happened at those. But, but Barbara, honestly, like you are, out of everyone in this room, like you're a true Sargonian, and I think everyone in the town knows how loyal you are to everyone here. So thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, that was in the, that was in my phone. Sorry, she actually did teach two of my children. That's not as important as what I just said. But thank you, thank you for that, too. And last but not least, Trish. So Trish, I honestly, I don't, I didn't really know really that well at all until about four years ago. Trish and I were vice presidents of the union, me in the high school, her in the middle school, right when COVID ended. And so we, we have many scars over the last four years, both physical and emotional, to attest to that. But Patricia, you are an awesome, you know, coworker in the union. You defend every one of your members with its nasty of a bulldog. And yeah, yeah, so I just want to say thank you for the work over the last four years. And that's it, I just want to
Thank you. And to all the retirees, thank you, guys. Listen, I, I think Mr. Whitbridge, myself, Mr. Hatch has been doing this, and Mr. Fisher, we're husbands of teachers, so we get it. We get the work you put in, we get the hours that you put in. I, I would tell you, I can't talk to my wife on Sunday, because things are getting graded and things are getting planned for the week, and I, it's just so, I, I really appreciate what you do, because I know, and I see it, I know the students are yours, you care about them. Like the things that, when there's problems with students, there's problems with you guys, you, you take those things with you, and I don't think people understand that, is every student in the classroom is like a part of a teacher. And, and I don't think people understand that. Tommy will tell you, I mean, like, I, I know every kid in my wife's class going back to when she started, and where they're going, what they're doing, and so to all the right retirees, I, I really appreciate everything you've done for this district, and you always have a home here. So if anyone else has anything.
I just want to point out that we try not to talk about school when we go home.
Mr. Chair, I just want to, I just want to thank everyone as well, and just from your remarks, I want to say that Wendy and Danielle are watching this meeting right now and trying to figure out who else John and I are marrying. I can't spin it, she's a pastry chef.
Next, we're moving on to discussion of budget cuts for the FY '26 approval by town meeting. I think, I think we hit on a lot of this stuff to begin with. I don't know how much more can be said, but, but the one thing I will reiterate, and I said this, is that it's, it's June 12th. So we have time. It's June 12th. So every day, I think we're looking at what we can do to make a tough situation better. So, and I, I, you know, we're looking for solutions. If anyone has any thing that they want to run by us, please do. So I don't know if anyone else has anything.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to say, too, like I've said before, the, the budgets are basically 20-month cycles. We're closing out the budget year right now, we're working on the budget for next year, and in a few months, the superintendent and his team are going to be starting on the budget for the following year. These things change day to day, there, there's adjustments, there, there's, there's new circumstances that come up, and we, as the committee, will just stay on top of it.
Yeah, things come in, things go out, so we'll, like I said, we're going to, we will, I think, like Mr. Whitbridge said, we've been yelling, we've been, we care, so.
Mr. Chair, you missed the enrollment policy.
Oh, well, I wouldn't want to miss that. Next, we have the update of enrollment policy. We had basically the first read a couple meetings ago, the last meeting. Basically, we took one line out of it, that you don't have to go to the town for a census anymore. So that's really the only change right now. So, any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the updated enrollment policy.
Chair seconds, can we do a roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. So next, we have the schedule for school committee meetings.
Do you have that in front of you?
Yeah, moving forward, so we do, we do one meeting in July and one in August. That's all subject to change, depending what happens. You know, it's funny, but these are scheduled for the second, fourth, fourth Thursdays of every month, but I think we meet every week.
During budget season, we definitely do.
I think we see each other a lot, and, but, so that's out there still, the second and fourth of every month, except for July and August, we'll do that in the middle of the month. So, any questions?
Are we supposed to vote on this? Well, I don't know why we don't vote until October 23rd, because after that's going to be a different committee. So no sense of planning meetings for them if they don't want to do the same nights we do, you know?
Yeah, that's a good point. It's a very good point. Do you want to, we can vote till, we can amend this to vote till October 23rd.
Mr. Chair, when's the election?
November 5th.
First Tuesday after the first, Monday in November.
So it's the fourth?
Whatever.
So do we need to have, should, do we need to have a meeting in November 5th or 6th?
Yes.
Yeah, you'll have a meeting after the new committee gets elected, you'll have a meeting the next day.
It'd be the
But it has to be on the books.
Yeah, so you, we should, you should, so you should go through
No, you get sworn in the next night, it's two nights later.
Two nights later.
So you should go through October 23rd and add November 6th for the next board to have their first meetings. And then, then it's up to them.
So we're going to amend this to November 6th, school committee meetings till November 6th.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
I make a motion to adopt the school committee meetings as stated through Thursday, October 23rd, and I'd also like to insert the last meeting that we voted on for November 6th for the new committee's first and organizational meeting.
Perfect. Chair seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Discussion of continuing as an ALIS school, so ALIS is, what's the acronym for that? It's
Alert.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, at this point, you'd lock down alert. What's the E? It's, it's, it's the emergency response alert.
Yeah, it's ALIS.
Right. So it's the emerg
E is evacuate.
Right, so yeah.
It's the fighting line.
Yeah.
I is inform.
What's the C?
Combat. But that I'll say combat, it makes sense. So any counter. So anyway, we currently are an ALIS district, but this would just be, do we continue to be an ALIS district? That definitely, basically, we follow that procedure for school intruders or those type of things, and we follow this procedure, and the procedure's in place.
I just have one question. Have we spoken to Chief Rick Adelley about it?
No, we haven't, but it's, so if you want, if you want to table it until the next meeting
Yeah, I'd like to table it.
I would, I would, yeah, absolutely, so.
If you guys
I do have one question about that.
Yeah.
When's the last time they had training for it? Because I don't remember there ever being training.
They have training at the beginning of the year, it's an online training.
Online?
Yeah, that's, it's an online training that they do every
Other districts I was in
But the training is an online package.
Yeah, I know schools do drills. They do lockdowns.
Yeah, when I was up in Hamilton, Wentzam, they used to have
You do, you do
They actually do the physical drills, you know? And same in Wellesley and stuff, so.
Okay.
Yeah, it'd be nice to
Absolutely.
You know, learning on the computer's one thing, but actually being involved with it is totally different.
Absolutely.
Totally different ballgame.
Should I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to table.
Chair seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
We've got approval of bills dated June 12th, 2025, in the amount of $829,810.38.
Motion to approve?
Chair seconds, can we do a roll?
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Yes.
Was that the budget transfer?
No.
No.
Okay, then yes.
Yes. Acceptance of a donation from Rocky Neck Art Colony for Saguas High School Drama Club in the amount of $500.
Motion to approve?
Chair seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
So we have a donation, we have a donation of 200, it's not on here, I'm sorry, but it needs to be accepted to get done. So we have a yearbook donation of $2,831.50.
From my yearbook company.
From the yearbook company. Do you know the name of the yearbook company?
Legacy.
Legacy, a donation from Legacy.
I thought the name was Yearbook Company. Motion to approve?
Chair seconds, all in favor? That wouldn't be bad if you're just doing yearbooks.
You all thought the same thing, I did.
So we've got an accept, acceptance of a donation by the Saguas Lions Club for Saguas High School Drama Club in the amount of $200.
Motion to approve?
Chair seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
And, wow, Sue, you've had, you've been at a lot of meetings lately. Approval of school committee meetings for May 22nd, 2025 executive session.
Motion to approve?
Chair seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Approval of school committee meeting minutes, May 2022, May 20, 20, May 22nd, 2025, open session.
Motion to approve?
Chair seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Approval of school committee meeting minutes, May 29th, 2025, executive session.
Motion to approve?
Chair seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Approval of school committee meeting minutes, May 29th, 2025, open session.
Motion to approve?
Chair seconds, all in favor? Approval of school committee meeting minutes for June 9th, 2025, executive session.
Motion to approve?
Chair seconds, all in favor? Sue, you have been busy. Approval of school committee meeting minutes, June 9th, 2025, open session.
Motion to approve?
Chair seconds, all in favor? I told you, sometimes we just meet every week.
Yeah.
Now, moving on to public comment. Any public comment? If you guys have something to say, come on. Oh, get up. Just state your name. Help him with the microphone? Just, oh, there you go, just rip it down. There you go.
My name is Oliver, and I'm graduating fifth grade tomorrow.
Congratulations, Oliver. How'd you do? How's your grades? Good?
And I would really like to invite the school committee to the fifth grade dance tomorrow.
Did you say dance? We'll be there. What time's it at?
Six o'clock.
What if I tell you I have my mother's birthday party tomorrow night? She's going to be 87 if I miss it.
You can actually bring your mother to the party.
I don't know about that one.
So, so where, Mike, can you help? So where, where's the dance? Upstairs? It's here? Okay.
It's going to be in the gymnasium, and the theme is going to be glow.
Glow? Okay. Just have someone tell you about the Holy Ghost when you dance.
No, I'm going to, I'm going to, Oliver, I'm going to come by and say hello, all right? That's what I'm going to do, I'm going to break away from the party, come by and say hello, and then I'll head back home.
You're going to leave your mother, and you're going to go, there you go.
Thank you for the invite, Oliver.
Thank you, Oliver.
Thank you. Mike, help him with the microphone.
You're good, you're good.
Oh, there you go.
Ms. Murphy had her hand up over there.
Yeah.
Kaylee Murphy?
Kaylee Murphy. Sadie DeSanto? So, see no public comment. We're going to recess to executive session for the purposes of negotiations, not to return to open session. Going into executive will be Superintendent Hashem, the school committee, and Sue McBride.
Motion to approve?
Chair seconds, all in favor? Oh, do a roll call, you're right.
Yes.
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 Yes.